Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take roll call?
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant. Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
And Robert Constant just came in.
Okay, thank you. So 7:02.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Madam Chair, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bless you, Councilman. I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the Order of Business, August 11th, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, virtual meeting as outlined and presented.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? All those in the interference here, let's make sure everybody is muted.
Me.
Okay, at this time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Next thing on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes. This is the Minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of July 28, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the Minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of July 28, 2020, is outlined in Item 4A.
Second.
Support. Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is comment only and on agenda items. Anybody like to? Doesn't look like anybody wants to.
I'm not seeing anyone thus far. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure where this static is coming from either.
I think it might be from Councilman Muscat's phone. Can you put it on mute, please?
Well, go ahead, mute media. Mute.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So for the questions from the audience, just in case there's somebody, I was just thinking out loud here, with a lot of them, some of them are not in video, so maybe you could give them a different method, maybe raising their hand per the chat or something.
They need to hit the raise the hand thing. It's on.
That's what I'm saying.
If it's not showing, it will still show up on the screen. That's what.
Okay. I just had to make sure, just in case there's somebody on there without video, in case they didn't speak.
Yeah, we're supposed to have them raise it. I'm going to have everybody just start using the hand because we can't see somebody. Do I've got more than one screen we're watching? It's several screens, and it's hard to go through and catch the waving hand. So.
We have three people, Madam Chair.
There is someone.
Okay.
Maher Ibrahim.
Do they have their yellow hand up? They need to put the yellow hand up. In your upper right corner, you should be able to push on that and raise your hand. Do you see that?
Under reactions.
Hajj Abu Ali. No, we've got Maher Ibrahim. Maher is not. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ali.
Yeah, how are you guys?
Good.
I just want to talk about the car dealership.
You have two minutes, and we cannot respond to you.
Okay, well, there's been a lot of hearsay about everybody. Like, I've got a chance to talk to a lot of council members, and Ex-Chief Lee Kevin said that the city council member, Bill Bazey, was the one that was against this for the car. And we know that's not the truth about it. We know that it was the mayor that put that into effect because the building inspector, Larry, told us this. We submitted this way back in October, and we've been complying with everything, you know, he asked us to put a site plan together. We started the site plan back in November 7. We submitted it, like, I think it was December 12, and then the moratorium went into effect. So, I mean, we've been doing everything. We've been living in Dearborn Heights for over 20 years. You know, we're good people. We have family that live here. You know, we're trying to do this the right way. You know, we're trying to, like, you know, do business, and we pay our taxes. We're trying to improve the city of Dearborn Heights. And, I mean, it's just, it's a shame to see a vacant property, and this whole entire time, we've been paying, we've been paying the rent on it just for this to get through. They passed it the six months, then the pandemic went into effect, then it went 45 days. And then after 45 days, now that they're trying to do on this agenda, another extension of 45 days, which isn't fair to us whatsoever. Like, we've just been quietly, you know, going along with this, waiting patiently, wasting money, paying all this. So, you know, for the love of God, please, I don't know the differences of everybody's opinions on the council members and all that kind of stuff, but from a political standpoint, if we could put our differences aside, please vote no on this, so we can proceed with this and open up a business in the city of Dearborn Heights that we live in and we love dearly.
Okay, next, I'll unmute Maher, and you have two minutes.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and good afternoon, city council members. My comment is regarding the same topic that was just mentioned. It's Section 9F of the Agenda on the extension of new used car lots moratorium. You are familiar with my case because I spoke already in the last two meetings regarding issues of getting a license as well. At the end of last year, I purchased an existing used car dealership in 4413 South Beach, Dade. I received the CEPO and zoning approval before closing. After taking over the facility and taking the time to upgrade the property, I applied for a license in March, but the city hall closed due to COVID. I applied again in June, and was surprised to find out that I cannot get a license because of the moratorium. I purchased the property for $250,000. It's using my savings loans to invest in the community. My extended family and friends, everybody I talked to in the city cannot understand why it cannot process a license. And after investing such a sum in the community and following the process by the book, and facing the potential loss of all the investment, while having to pay, make all the payments for the facility and the property. But the business does not have any operating businesses, and approving a license in that area can really contribute to the community. Also, members commented in the last meeting when I spoke that that was not the intention of the moratorium, especially when it's existing sites that use to run the same business. I want to do business in Dearborn Heights. I pay my taxes there, and I want to provide services there. The moratorium, in its current format, is unclear compared to cases like mine. Even when discussing with the building manager, when discussing with my friends, with business owners in the city, everybody has the same opinion. As you vote on the moratorium, I ask that you kindly consider the facts of my case. We've invested in the city, I'm keeping the property, paying the taxes, bringing an investment in time where we really need investment in the city during the pandemic. Most importantly, I mean, this was an existing business. You know, we followed the process. There's no way we could have found out that after we bought the business, this moratorium went into effect. The facility is set up for dealership. I mean, if this doesn't get approved, the building will stand.
Thank you. Two minutes are up. Okay, is there anybody else that has anything? Please raise your hand. Did anybody see any yellow hands out there? Okay, at this time, I don't see anymore. I'm going to move on. Next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat, go ahead. He's been raising his hand.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
I move, City Council, approve Fund Transfer 6-1 through 623 and present it.
Support.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Bazey.
Item 611, there's a few charges on PEC fee issues for 611. What is the PEC fee issues? What's going on with that one?
Okay, this one is our former corporate counsel, Gary Miyaki, still. Actually, I'm not sure why it's even on here. We don't have a valid contract for him at this time. That was a violation of the charter. I can't even approve that.
Madam Chair.
Housewoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was going to be my question as well as with 611, because there isn't a current contract that is required per the charter. And my question was, as far as being in alignment with what the charter requires, as far as being comfortable with paying a bill for services when we don't have a contract, and I don't believe we are in alignment with what the charter presentation and requirements are. So I had a concern about that as well.
Yeah, I know that he was appointed until April, and then the mayor had the right to, according to charter, extend it to May, but nothing in the charter allows the mayor or council to go beyond that point. So, at this point, the mayor must possess the corporate counsel. I hope he can approve. We don't have corporate Miyaki right now, corporate counsel Miyaki, so I don't think we'll pay him. I'm not going to vote for it. We're in Lynch and Hampton, which is also a couple of local services that we don't have a contract with. That is 6-16. If we had a contract, I'd have no problem paying him, but we don't.
The mayor's raising his hand.
I understand. Councilman Wenzel?
No, it was Ray the Mayor and Mr. Miyaki.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. We're going to, Councilman Muscat.
I understand what everybody's saying about the no contract, but we still need legal representation from someone here. And if we got to keep what we have right now because of the COVID, it behooves us to approve this as submitted.
I'm sorry, Councilman, but I can't approve something we don't have a contract for. We're going up against the charter, and I can't do that. I understand if they come with a contract, they have a contract, and you ask to approve, I have no problem doing that. It's just. Okay, hold on.
I want to make a couple of comments. In accordance with the charter, I submitted a recommendation that Mr. Miyaki could be reappointed as Corporation Counsel. There was no response specifically to what was tabled, and consequently, the words "Council Chair" was, or in some of the council members also, that he would continue until the COVID situation, because I indicated to you, I cannot do personal interviews at this point, and that was the agreement. As it relates to the charges for the PEC fee, the treasurer asked Mr. Miyaki to do a legal opinion, which he is wrapping up and maybe has completed. That's what that research and cost was associated with, to satisfy the new treasurer's request.
Madam Chair.
Does not allow us to extend it or use it on May, so at this point, we're going to have to deal with Zoom if that's your choice as far as interviewing.
Madam Chair.
Before the pandemic. Go ahead, Mr. Bazey.
Well, I mean, we appointed a treasurer, and we appointed a city clerk on Zoom, and the mayor put in front of us so many items. I mean, he wanted us to approve a budget of $20 million of something via Zoom. I don't know why he can't interview somebody through Zoom. You know, a lot of attorneys are working right now, so, I mean, that's not an excuse.
What do we do for you?
Well, Mayor, it's up to you to appoint the corporate counsel, according to charter. You were able to bear back and know better when light had an issue and to start looking elsewhere in case. That letter was sent to you back in November, and I did read it at one of the meetings. So you had fair warning before this pandemic even hit, so at this point, we can't do it. I mean, there's nothing in the charter, which is our law, that allows us to do that. Our charters are law, and we are breaking the law if we approve it. Now, I took an oath for office to follow law. Mayor, go ahead.
I am still waiting for a response from my original appointment. You tabled it as a group.
It failed to get support.
No, it didn't. You tabled it. You did not approve it or disapprove it.
Okay, Councilman Constant and Councilman Abdullah. Go ahead, Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do recall that there was some discussion about continuing with our present Corporation Counsel until the COVID crisis was over, our courts are closed, the building is closed. Mr. Miyaki is the lowest bidder. He has the most experience. I just don't know what the alternative is. We need somebody prosecuting our ordinance violations at the court and dealing with our department heads. I remember Councilman Abdullah brought up that we should place a time limit, a calendar day limit, on the Corporation Counsel, but at a past meeting, our temporary treasurer asked the city attorney to do research. It's, I don't know what the alternative is. So if we don't, we need to have a city attorney. We need Seacrest Wardle doing the work with the Planning Commission and so forth. And we're at a stalemate. We're at loggerhead, so we have to break through the stalemate.
Unfortunately, our quarter doesn't allow that. To Councilman Abdullah.
So a couple of things I just want to point out. The problem I had with this way back when was it was too open-ended. Whenever you say, and this is whether we hire Gary Miyaki's counsel, or Council Gary Miyaki's firm or not, it was too open-ended when we said we're going to wait until COVID is over, because that's an arbitrary number, figure, statement. What is over? I mean, obviously, for the rest of our lives, there'll probably be at least one person that has it. So is it still on? Is it off? So that was a little bit open-ended, and we had no timeline, no specific timeline, where we will readdress it. So to me, it's not only unfair, and I don't know about the legalities, but to have a firm do all the work, and then right now, after the work is completely done, 30 days later, now we say, well, we're not going to pay you. I think it's, I don't think it's right. Now, again, whether we hire another firm or not, that's a different conversation. But now that the work has been done, I think it's only fair and right that we pay the person. Otherwise, what we should have done then, on day one, prior to day one, say, don't work this month because we're not going to pay you. That would have been the right thing to do. Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, I have a question. Was the corporate counsel instructed not to do any work for the city any further? And were all city employees instructed not to ask him to do any work? If that's not the case, then I think that we should do that, if that's what we decided to do. But since we haven't done that, I don't think we have. I think it's only fair that they pay him up until this point.
I agree.
My thing is, corporate counsel Miyaki interprets our charter all the time. He knows it inside and out, and he knows what is required and what's not. So he should have brought at least a temporary contract to us to approve, pay these. I have no problem if he brings a contract to us, let us approve it, and then pay him. I just want to do it according to the charter. We need a contract from him before we can pay, and that's just me. I mean, I don't care. I mean, he'd still get paid. He won't get paid tonight, but we need a contract to cover ourselves, because I'm not going against charter. We all took an oath to follow our law, which is the charter. Councilman Muscat.
Yeah, I'm going to say this again, regardless of contract or no contract, we need an attorney. And I really don't care at this point in time who it is. And right now, we have Mr. Miyaki as the attorney, and Seacrest Wardle doing all of this work. If we decide to tell these people to stop working right now, we might as well shut the city down. I mean, this work has got to continuously go on. Now, if we decide to have a temporary contract, I'm going to suggest Mr. Miyaki put one in immediately so it can be approved even on an emergency meeting, because we have to have legal representation. Now, if I'm out of line on that, I would think that the legal people that are on this board could tell me I'm out of line, but I don't think I am.
Councilman Bazey.
No, I mean, I do agree. We should put something temporary, but we can't keep extending it, you know, because that was, in the past, that was presented to us. And, you know, we've been talking about this since last year, way before the pandemic, and nothing was done. I mean, I'm for putting, I am for putting something temporary for now, but there has to be a deadline. We can't keep extending it.
Charter doesn't allow us to do that. But I do see on May 18 meeting, motion number 2-131, motion by Councilman Constant, motion was not seconded to approve the appointment of Gary Miyaki as Corporation Counsel in accordance with Section 5.15 of the City Charter as outlined in 8th of the Mayor municipal communication dated May 4, 2020. So hearing no second, the motion was not considered, and that's how it ended up. Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, I don't think the fact that the mayor can't do personal interviews is an excuse. We're running the city via Zoom meetings. I think he can interview his candidates electronically, if that's the case.
Councilman Abdullah?
I, for what I know, Gary Miyaki's been raising his hand, so I'd like to hear his viewpoint. But also, in addition to that, I think what we can do, even if it's beyond the charter, we can subcontract them to do work for us for 30 days, 45 days, or, you know, whatever we, as a council, agree, until such time that the mayor has another appointee or another person picked, or multiple persons picked, for us to vote on. And I think 30 to 45 days from now is plenty of time, and with due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think that definitely can be done via Zoom, no doubt about it. Thank you. But I think we should hear Gary, what Gary has to say, because he's been trying to raise his hand.
I'm not in our corporate counsel right now, and this is for council people only. Councilman Constant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree. I mean, we could, and then we were also discussed having a study session, because like I said, we're at a stalemate. We could extend his contract, if he has a prior contract, at the same hourly rate, and he was the lowest bidder, as I recall. 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, or whatever the council's idea would be. But again, we need somebody prosecuting the ordinance violations, dealing with emergencies, and so on.
Can you show us the charter? Councilman Constant, we weren't able to do that, because I couldn't find it, and I had two legal people look at it. They could not find it. There's nothing in the charter.
The procedure is that the mayor nominates, and the council affirms. So the mayor nominated Gary Miyaki. He's been the city attorney since, for as long as I can remember, and the council didn't affirm, but we have to have an alternative.
Okay, I understand, but it failed. That motion failed. You were the only one that supported it. Councilman Muscat.
We extend contracts all the time in times of situations like this. We do it all the time. We've been doing it for the five years or six years that I've been a councilperson. We've extended contracts. We've put a date on it, and it behooves us right now to do this because of the COVID situation. Now, Mr. Mayor can do that via Zoom. I agree with that. But what are we going to do in the meantime? I mean, come on, we've got to be smart about this.
Any further comment?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I agree. Like, I feel that, you know, corporate attorney Gary Miyaki has done the work, and he should be paid for it, but I'm also concerned about the charter requirements. And there has been times we cannot use COVID as an excuse for not having this done, because, well, we are running the city via Zoom meetings. We did do an appointment of a treasurer, an appointment of a city clerk. I think it is fair that we have an expectation that the mayor brings forward an appointment, and it's concurrence, by the way, the word "concurrence," for a city council to concur with that appointment. And I, quite frankly, don't recall any other names being brought to us, and part of a vetting process like we did for treasurer and clerk, Madam Chair.
Any further comments? Okay, let's vote on, well, how do we want to deal with this? I mean, I think if we get a contract, I have no problem approving it. It's just, I don't want to prove this until we have a contract.
We have a motion on the table.
Oh, okay. How do we want to handle this?
Madam Chair.
We have a motion on the table to approve 6-1 through 623.
Okay.
And submit it.
All right, Councilman Constant, I'm sorry, Councilman Abdullah, do you want to vote?
Well, I just want to suggest some to you, maybe if you wanted. Maybe we vote on all of them with the exclusion of 612, and then we vote on 612 separately.
611.
611, whatever it is.
All right, all right. We'll vote on everything except 611 and 616. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Well, we'd have to change the motion, remember.
Okay.
So I don't know who made the motion. They'd have to change the motion to exclude those two, and then we vote on those two separately.
Ray Muscat made the motion.
That was Ray Muscat.
Okay.
I made the motion, but I don't want to make that motion.
Okay, well, let's vote on the motion.
Somebody else wants to make a motion?
We make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept it minus, as you stated, Council Chair, 612 and.
611 and 616?
Yes, correct.
Who supported it?
Dave Abdullah.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call on this. We have Councilman Wenzel. What is your vote?
Yes.
Councilman Constant?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Just want to clarify something. We're still going to vote on those two, other two separately.
Yes, we're bringing it up.
Okay, so yes.
Okay, Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell? Yes, okay. It passes minus 12. All right, minus those two. So now we have to pull out 611 and 616 and figure out how we want to deal on this. And I'm wondering if we, how soon we can get a contract on this, at least to approve it as an independent attorney.
Madam Chair.
Please, to get the fees paid, because we do need to get the fees paid. I do agree with that. Councilman Constant?
I move that we approve current claim 611 and 616, and either instruct our Gary Miyaki to propose a interim contract for, like I say, whatever the council's pleasure is, 30 days, 45 days, or extend his existing contract. And that can be two separate motions, but we need to deal with claims 611 and 616. The work was done. It was done on reliance that they were the city attorneys. They've been the city attorneys. I'm sure the work Cole Seacrest has done there, you know, a large firm, they'll want to be paid.
We've got Councilman Abdullah here. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, with due respect to Councilman Robert Constant, we can't vote on that, because you made a motion with this, either this or this. We can't. either this or this, we can't vote on that, because it would dilute our vote. Because you said either this or this. So, it has to be one motion with one statement, instead of this or that, because otherwise, we defeat the vote.
Councilwoman Bazey, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I was gonna suggest that you refer this back to the administration. That way, they can get the contract ready, this interim contract, and then it comes forward with the contract and puts those claims back on. Then it can be approved once one is approved as well, you see what I'm saying? So, refer it back to the administration, is my recommendation.
I would hope that they would get it to us by the next meeting.
Yes.
And no later than the next meeting.
Make the motion, Councilwoman.
Okay, so I move that we refer those two items back to the administration, and I would tie bar that to that interim contract to bring it forward to the city council for the appointment of the attorney Gary Miyaki.
Support.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilwoman Conston is opposed. Let's take a roll call. Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conston?
No.
Councilwoman Bella?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Miyaki, yes. It passes, so... Our next meeting, and we'll approve it, and we'll just pay him.
Council Chair?
I am, I am.
Council Chair?
The clerk is speaking.
I didn't hear who seconded that motion that...
I did.
Who seconded? Councilwoman Bazey?
Muscat.
Muscat.
Thank you.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Bella?
So, even with this motion, we still have to address... Okay, now we're talking about the 16, whatever it is, some thousand that's owed to Gary Miyaki's firm. But we still have to address from today forward, until that date that the mayor comes to us with new possible appointments. Is he allowed to continue to work? Because based on some of the statements that have been made, he'd have to stop today.
As long as he's bringing us the contract by our next meeting, I don't have a problem, do you?
Well, but then we have to address that, because otherwise, what can happen? We could say, hey, we told you, you don't have a contract, so why are you working? Why are you bringing us an additional charge of hypothetically 15,000?
No, I understand that, but I thought that we had all agreed that as long as you brought a contract...
He would continue work from today forward until the contract comes up, is that correct?
Now, if the mayor gives to somebody within the next 30 days or less, that we can possibly consider.
I just don't want to leave it, I just don't want to leave it open-ended, that's all I'm concerned about.
No, 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 I agree, we do need to pay, we just need a contract, that's the main problem.
I agree with that, I agree with that.
Councilwoman Bassie?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, do you think, and while my question is, is would a motion be in order to authorize Attorney Gary Miyaki to do the work up until 30 or 45 days, whatever the council chooses, and upon, you know, that contract being presented?
I wouldn't go no more than 30 days, because we've kicked the can down the road too much already.
Right.
Let's say we pay, if payment were being given to him upon a contract that is approved, it will allow him to go up to 30 more days.
30 days, do you want a motion for that? For Councilwoman Bella, all due respect, I mean, I agree with him. I mean, that, make a motion of that nature to support what you just said. I would move that, support that, Madam Chair.
I agree.
Do I make a motion?
Um, go ahead.
Can I make a motion that administration bring forward, I'm sorry, council bring forward to us contract, temporary term contract for no more than 30 days, within the next 30 days, for a total of 60 days from today?
No, that's not the amount, we have 30.
Well, because he's got, the way we said it, he's got 30 days, or the administration's got 30 days to bring us a contract, at which point he'll be paid. And in that contract, the extension would be no more than 30, for a combined 60, the way I'm understanding, you guys.
Not me, it was 30.
You want a combined total of 30?
Total 30. That would give the mayor time to find...
I hope it happens, but I don't think it'll happen.
Yeah, it's...
If we're gonna do that, then we probably should do 45 days, because between interviews, appointments, and then making sure, and I'm sorry, I should ask for permission, Council Chair? Sorry about that, sorry about that. Because between interviewing, selecting somebody, bringing us a contract, and then, we gotta make sure it's on a date that we do have a council meeting, which, as you know, comes in two-week fragments. This could very easily take, easily more than 30 days. So, to me, if that's the case, then let's do 45.
I don't care, what does everybody think?
I came through with 45, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Councilwoman Bassie?
Yeah, I just want to make this clear that we're giving him permission to perform all the functions of Corporation Counsel from this minute onward until the contract is presented, is that correct?
We need the contract decided by the next meeting to let him go on and to be paid for what he's done in the past.
Because I just don't want it to be where we'll be arguing about his performing from now till then. So, we are giving him permission to perform all the duties of Corporation Counsel, right?
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
And...
Just make that clear.
Okay, so do we need a second to this motion? We made a motion, Councilwoman Bella, I need a second.
A second, the motion.
Councilwoman Conston, second that. Now, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a veto of motion approving resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council requesting documents pursuant to Charter Section 6-13. With that, I need to reintroduce, for possible reconsideration of approved motion 20-258, that's the resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to request documents pursuant to Charter Section 6-13. And with that, I will have Madam Clerk read that section afterwards.
Section 7.13, veto by mayor. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that the said veto, with the mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the city clerk at least 24 hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may, only at said meeting, reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if it so elects, may only at said meeting, re-adopt such proceedings by five-sevenths vote of all the members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden, and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceeding shall then become effective on the following day succeeding such meeting of the council, and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceeding shall be published until the meeting following the meeting at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted.
Okay, at this time, we need to take a vote on, that would be Resolution 20-258. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair.
I'll take a roll call vote.
We gotta make the motion.
Yeah. We have to make a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Bazey?
Okay, I make the motion to reintroduce 20-258, motion by Councilman Bazey, seconded by Councilman Muscat, to adopt resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council requesting documents pursuant to Charter 6.13 as outlined in 11A per Council Chairwoman Melanowski Maxwell, communication dated July 28, 2020, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Muscat. At this time, I'd like to take a vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
And then take a roll call vote, since we have Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conston?
No.
Councilwoman Bella?
No.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Melanowski Maxwell, yes, we have overridden the veto. Next item on the agenda?
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay.
We've overridden numerous vetoes on this subject. How many times do we get to have vetoes here? This is all stemming from the financial review. I don't see why we have to keep overriding vetoes. Should be only one veto, it was defeated. Okay, so let's carry on without any more vetoes.
Yeah, I agree.
As of late, I did check into that today, we have nine vetoes in regards to this. And it has cost us lots of money for Corporate Counsel Miyaki to write these up to the mayor. So, at this point, you know, the vetoes did not all come free. So, it did cost us. So, at this time, we need to move on. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director John Selmy, 2020 Lead Water Service Replacement Program Contract Amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the city council concur with Director of Public Works, John Selmy, and approve the budget transfer of $250,000 from the Emergency Water and Sewer Repairs to the Lead Line Service Project as outlined in Item 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey, is there any discussions?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Bazey?
I'd like to find out, I know we brought this up the last meeting when we approved the first wave. Which homes, I mean, I don't need to know right now. There was a letter that was sent by the city, I've actually gotten many calls this past week regarding the letter with the lead. And a lot of residents want to know if their homes has been affected, you know, and I don't know how many people have gotten it. This is the letter?
I got the letter.
Yeah, so, is there... So, my question is, if the homes are not in a motion, I mean, I didn't see them, I mean, they're not required to be in a motion, however, I think they should be listed on the website, so residents could know if their home is affected, if they're gonna do work on their home out of this motion, and the previous one.
Um, Director Selmy wants to come, go ahead, please.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you. So, the letter that all the residents received is because we exceeded the action level with the state again. So, they required us to send that letter out to every water customer within the city. Currently, we have identified about 280 homes. After some further review, this is where the other 79 came from. We're basing this on historic records, this is where we pulled our initial information from. After some further review of some water main projects that was, that were completed in the past, we've located some more lead services. This is probably gonna be pretty fluid. I may be back here again asking for some more money. Now that the contractor is out in the neighborhood, is working, people are coming out and asking them to look at their water services. So, we ask people to call us, we, you know, we'll help them try to identify if they have a lead line or a copper line. So, that's, but that letter is a mandate from the state of Michigan, because we exceeded the level.
Thank you. Any further comments or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Bella?
Just want to also say that with Director Selmy, he was able to do this as a pretty reasonable amount of average, just over $3,000 per property, so it's a pretty good number. Want to say, good job on that.
Okay, any further questions in regards to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those approved? Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Myers' purchase and payment for five vehicles.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Muscat?
I move City Council concur with Chief Mark Myers on the purchase of five vehicles at a cost of $143,123. But this would be paid for from federal and state forfeiture accounts. So, that's big, that we're getting five vehicles that way, as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bella, is there any questions directly related to this?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Bazey?
I know, I talked to the chief, he answered one of my questions, but a couple of questions popped up. I want to ask, just to confirm, that these vehicles, they're not gonna be used by staff in command, or even like somebody from any city officials? Are those strictly be used for, as stated in the motion?
Police Chief Myers, do you need to unmute yourself?
I don't know what you mean by command, because one of the people that will use it is a supervising officer of that unit.
Okay, so are those replacing, I'm sorry, I just, I know I asked that question via email, but other questions. But are those replacing any other vehicles, or those are new vehicles, like new tasks?
So, those are replacing vehicles, when these vehicles are purchased, I will send those to auction, which will go in front of you, and those will disclose those vehicles. But until they're out of service, I cannot disclose those descriptive features.
No, I understand, so those vehicles will have suppressed plates, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers' approval for auction of vehicles.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Conston?
I move that we concur with our Police Chief, Mark Myers, and approve the auction of the vehicles as outlined in Item 9D.
Or...
Okay, do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bella, is there any questions in regards to this?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Bazey?
Okay, so, two questions are, okay, I know there was two motions, 9D and 9E. So, for 9D, are those strictly forfeiture vehicles, or, none of them are police vehicles, right?
That is not correct. So, some of those are already decommissioned vehicles. So, on that list of four, those vehicles that you see on there, one was a special operations vehicle, two were police-owned vehicles that were currently used, that have a greater value than the ones on the other list. There, it's a, it's a, the type of vehicle being auctioned, not whether that they were police vehicles or not. And I can explain that on the next one, why there's so many on that next list.
Yeah, and the reason why I asked, Chief, thank you, is I see the one on 9E, there's two vehicles listed on 9E, are also listed... I'm sorry, 9D, they're also listed on 9E, that's why I asked that question.
And it's, those are retired police cars that were parted out, and we're actually going through our inventory in our storage lot, where we scout, basically scavenger parts for the cars to keep them running, and that one got duplicated.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions directly related to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Deputy Chief, Deputy Police Chief Voiles' approval for auction of vehicles.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that City Council concur with Deputy Chief of Police, Gary Voiles, and approve the auction of the listed vehicles as outlined in 9E. And it should be noted that the proceeds from the sale of these vehicles will be placed in the federal forfeiture account.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey, is there any questions directly related to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Before I go on, I'm gonna mention something, that there's people in the audience that are raising their hands. It is not proper to speak during the meeting when council is voting on items. We will give you a chance at the end to speak, so please don't raise your hand until after you are prompted to do so, because you will not be called on, unfortunately. Okay, at this time, we have District Administrator Ross, so, extension of new used car law moratorium.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Muscat?
I'm gonna make a motion so we can open up some dialogue on this. I move that council concur with Tom Roscoe on the moratorium as outlined... concur with Tom Roscoe on the moratorium as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Wenzel. Is there any questions directly?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I, I think this has run its course and I think it's done a good job. And we have, uh, a, a, a business that wants to start up on Easter Road. And they've been waiting very patiently. And, uh, it, it's, I, I know what the, uh, attorney told the clerk about. It's a new business. But to me, it's, it's the same business. We're not adding one, we're not subtracting one. So I, I'd like to see this, this motion fail. But we could all to bring it back because what is right is right. A gentleman is trying to open up a business, uh, and had his paperwork and then the COVID struck. So I think we're penalizing this gentleman, uh, for no reason at all. So that's why I wish this would fail.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, I want to say something before we go further. There's not just one person. There's more. There's people that are waiting for this. This is not just an individual thing. And I think we should allow Tom from TIPA to, uh, maybe tell us why he's made the decision so we can maybe understand what's going on. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thanks. Um, I, I, too, I, I think, like you said, there's, there's a couple situations here. Uh, the gentleman who had the existing, uh, use on the building as a used car lot, I think that certainly would be a special exemption that your body could make since the use of the property has not changed. So in terms of use, it's not a new used car lot. Uh, in, in terms of the, the, the reason for the, the ass, asking for the extension, uh, as you know, your body is the one who wants to meet with the city of Taylor, with the officials, which has kind of put this whole project on pause. And, uh, it's a great idea. Let's meet with them. Uh, I talked, I finally got ahold of, uh, representative from the consultants yesterday. He said he was waiting for the council chair to set up the meeting, I guess. So I don't know if there's a disconnect, a misunderstanding. You know, I just love this.
You're getting a hold of me.
Right, so, so that's, yeah, I, I don't know where the disconnect is, but if we can set up a meeting as soon as possible, whoever has to do it, uh, that would be great. It's just, we, we just need to get this, this project moving and some decisions and we're happy to help. TIPA is happy to do what we can. And I did, in terms of background, uh, the, the question that was brought up before about, um, the participation of the city of Taylor, uh, doing some talking with officials there, it turns out the majority of the, the participation on Taylor side will be from their TIPA because their TIPA, their TIPA extends the entire city. So that may be why the city council people weren't really in the know because it's actually being taken care of by their TIPA. So just to give you some background there.
I have Councilman Wenzel next.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, um, what is the timeframe as when the moratorium was adopted and the gentleman got, uh, his C of O? Or which one came first? Does anybody know?
Um, can we ask the clerk's office clerk? I know that you are handling some of that. Madam Clerk?
I don't want to say anything that I don't know for certain. I want to say that it was September. He didn't apply for the business license though until June. I can look, I can look real quick for the email that I sent Mr. Miyaki though.
So where was the original moratorium? Do we remember?
Oh, that was in, that was in December.
So it didn't have anything to do with the COVID then. It was just a lack of not getting it in under the deadline of the moratorium.
Okay. Right, it, the, the, the original, um, um, resident or moratorium was in December.
And I think it's at your desk or something. You could look at that.
And then it was extended once and this is, this would be the third extension or second extension.
All right.
It's on the same.
Also, also, um, if, if we don't extend the moratorium, what, what, how's that going to affect other businesses wanting to open up used car lots, wanting to open up tomorrow?
It was hanging behind, um, it was hanging behind, um.
They, they, uh, can open up.
Councilman Coniston, please be recognized. We're waiting for both to give order. Then I have you next and I have Councilman Bazey next.
I just want to make sure that, you know, legally, we cover our butts on this. It, we, we don't want five, uh, people coming tomorrow morning to apply for used car lot licenses since the moratorium's not extended.
And, yeah. Councilman Coniston, you're next, and then Councilman Bazey. Go ahead. I guess we'll wait for Lynn, but go ahead while we're waiting.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think the answer to Councilman Wenzel's, uh, comment is if the, if there's no longer the moratorium, if the applicants otherwise qualify, then they, um, get their license. The, the business at Beach Daily and Van Born, there's an auto repair business there and has been an auto repair business. I don't know if the gentleman bought the LLC of the corporation that existed or if that person transferred their license somewhere else, but uh, all I want to say is it's a, it's a balancing act. I remember when all this discussion arose, there was a lot of, uh, people parking used cars for sale on Van Born, uh, east of Monroe on vacant lots and, and different things. And there was an existing business. But we have to consider whether we want to continue the moratorium on this one particular use and have vacant storefronts, uh, or property that can't be used versus, um, approaching the situation from the zoning and the planning commission and so forth and looking at the overall uses in the area. I know west of there, there are a lot of car and truck, uh, repair facilities. And it's known that if you own a a diesel rig, for example, you go there and you get your, your diesel fixed. And those businesses, while they're not the, the most attractive, uh, they, they operate, they've operated and they pay their taxes. Thank you.
Councilman Bazey, you're next.
Yeah, one of the, the residents or the, also the owner, he made a statement, uh, and actually I've gotten phone calls stating, um, that it was, this is, uh, well, they, they gave my phone number. I, I don't understand why Lee Gavin or, uh, Councilman Coniston would say that I put this on agenda. Clearly, if you look at the agenda, uh, you'll see that it, it's false. Uh, they should not mislead or make false statements to the public. This is not a game. And this is affecting people's livelihood. They should not make false statements and sending residents on a wild goose chase. I'm not surprised based on previous events trying to discredit some council members. I expected Councilman Coniston to do this, but not our retired police chief. Uh, Lee Gavin and Cons, uh, Councilman Coniston should note that I did not put this on the agenda. As you can see, Tom Roscoe, and you guys made the motion, he signed a moratorium and the mayor's office put it on the agenda. In fact, I will not vote yes for this. To extend the moratorium, we usually place a moratorium, uh, temporary while we prepare an ordinance for this particular matter. However, in this matter, the moratorium has been extended already, as stated earlier. Uh, we need an ordinance, not yet another extension of the moratorium. Extending the moratorium yet again would further waste time and inhibit immediate business opportunities and revenues for the city.
Hey, Councilman Coniston.
Madam Chair, I, I never suggested that Councilman Bazey put this on the agenda. I think if anybody's thinking of anything, it's that uh, he authored the, uh, moratorium on the hookah lounges, which is completely different. But I never suggested to anyone right here, on the record that he, uh, uh, adjusted the moratorium.
Okay, thank you. We have the clerk. Are you able, Madam Clerk, are you wanting to talk now or?
Do you, do you want the timeline for the moratorium or the timeline for the business?
Both.
Both.
Okay, so the original moratorium was, um, approved on December 10th. Okay, um, and that gave an end date of June 30th. Okay, the second, the continuation of the new used car lot moratorium was approved on June 23rd. And I think that, that would run till August 14th. Okay, thus, the, I guess, the, uh, continuation. So that's the moratorium. Now, we have the new used car lot and we say it's news because it's a new business. Okay, it's not a new type of business in that location, but it is a new business. That would be like, you know, a McDonald's going into a Wendy's. They would still have to go through the process of applying for a new business license for that particular business. Um, Mr. Abraham did give us all the documentation on, I have it here, June 22nd of 2020. Okay? I have the full certificate of occupancy that was issued in September of 19. Um, he was up to date on his personal property taxes, up to date on his water bill. Um, but he didn't apply at that time. He didn't apply until June 22nd. So that's, that's the facts in the matter.
Well, possible solution, if he acquires the former owner's LLC, he could renew it under the former owner's license and avoid all of this, right?
Hmm. I'm not quite sure on that one. It would be a new owner. It would still be a new owner.
It would be on the same, if it's the same LLC, if he sold it to him, it would still be the same.
Let me see, let me see.
Okay.
Okay, he is, it's connect auto and the old owner. I'm looking to see. It doesn't show that, I don't know if this is a difference because I'm not familiar with LLC. This was an in- incorporated.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the same thing as an LLC offhand. And that, that, that particular license expired in April of 19.
Councilman Coniston and then Councilman Adella.
Yeah, I believe that's the issue is, uh, one issue, um, and, and
I'm just doing.
Uh, Gary Miyaki suggested at a prior meeting that, you know, there is a way or ways for him to come in under the moratorium, but, uh, if, if, so if I buy a Ford dealership and put in a Chevy dealership, it's, it's a, the same type of use, but a different owner. If I buy the existing Ford dealership, if I buy Village Ford, then I buy the corporation, the same corporation is operating the business. And I, I don't know what this gentleman did. Uh, uh, but, but, you know, that would be the issue. Like I say, um, another way to address it is with the planning commission, with the overall, uh, you know, business, what track record the business owner has and, and, and so forth and so on. I've seen the business. It's a, it says Affordable Auto Works and it's auto repair business. Um, I wasn't aware that there was car sales going on, but, uh, if, if that's what the gentleman wants to do and is applying for, that's what he wants to do.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Adella.
I just want to make a couple of, um, statements, um, because we're, we're talking about two different things here. I mean, one of them is the property on, uh, Beach Daily, obviously. And the other one is a moratorium in general. I agree with Councilman Bazey in that we can't keep extending the moratorium. There does come a point where we got to either putting in, put in an ordinance like he mentioned, or then just leave it alone like, like we typically do. But a couple of things that I want to point out. You've got right now between the two businesses that today earlier commented, you got, uh, combined almost 600, $700,000 that was invested in our city. And both of them, we are stopping them from opening up businesses. There is no new business demand. Now, I'm speaking based on my business. There is no new or now high demand for new businesses on Van Born. In a perfect world, we all, myself included, would love the most beautiful of businesses to open up there, whether it's a bakery, coffee shop, uh, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the demand is not there. I did a search prior to our meeting on Van Born and on Van Born, the properties are on the market right now. You got a, many, 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 about 13, 14 of them that did not sell. And you got four that are still on the market and still not selling. And just a couple of them here, I'm looking in front of me. You got 329 days on the market for one of them. I'm not going to give the addresses just because, you know, it's not fair. You got another one with 503 days plus 489 days on the market for another building. And then you got a third building with 1,507 days on the market. So again, in a perfect world, these properties would be selling and beautiful retail shops would open. The reality is the demand is not there. So I think instead of having boarded up buildings, let's allow something to be there. And then like Councilman Bazey mentioned, maybe we put an ordinance to ha, to control that somehow. But they had 45 days more, they had, we had the initial six month, then we had another 45 day moratorium. With due respect to everybody involved, there's plenty of time to set up a Zoom meeting. There's no reason why we should extend this another 45 days to do a Zoom meeting. It's not fair to the people that are investing in, in our city. And it's not fair to the residents to keep these properties closed up.
Okay, we have a motion on table. Let's just take a vote because we're not making any progress in regards to this. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon? Okay, let's go do it again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
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 The ayes have it. Uh, the motion fails. The more.
No used car lot.
Okay, next.
Everybody.
Can I ask us for direction for the committee? Where should we go with this now?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
We, we, we need an ordinance, like everything else. You put a moratorium temporary. We, we've had it on the books, then we did an extension again. I mean, there should be an ordinance to control anything within a city. That's how every city operates. So we don't operate on more.
Are we still going to meet with Taylor or?
Yeah.
Who's setting up the meeting?
Tomorrow, call me tomorrow and we'll set up a meeting while we're here.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Councilman Adella was stating that there, there's no demand for that property there. And one of the reasons is because the Van Born is full of used car lots. Who wants to, who wants to purchase property on a used car lot avenue? This is another, this is another mistake by city council to allow this to happen. I didn't even talk to one resident, except for the owner, that wants this. I, just on the contrary, everyone I talked to said they do not want this. This is another mistake by city council. I'm on, go on the record saying, I am, I, I, I appreciate this gentleman who put his money in. He didn't put his application in in time. We're opening up a can of worms here. The, the, this is just going to, this will not increase property value on Van Born Road. It'll just do the opposite of what our goal is for the Van Born corridor. That's a big mistake.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, let's move on to new business. We have a business license renewal for Randy's Robindale Bar located at 25122 Warren Avenue.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we, uh, concur with our clerk and renew the business license for Randy's Robindale Bar on Warren and Dearborn Heights.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from the council table. Madam Clerk has an announcement for us. Go ahead. Our new.
There we go. I would like to thank all of you and I would like to take a moment to thank everyone that had a part in making the Dearborn Heights August 4th, 2020 primary election a success. Closing City Hall on Election Day was phenomenal. The day would not have been a success without the cooperative efforts of all those involved. From the police department, our DPW building maintenance crew, Parks and Recreation, the, all the employees that agreed to help out in City Hall or at a precinct or as a member of the absentee counting board. Um, I am extremely grateful to have such a strong election team. I cannot begin to thank all of our election workers enough for the long, hard hours they put in as well as our pit crew, which many of you may have seen around City Hall. They are simply extraordinary. The clerk's office staff, our deputy clerk Kathy, our office clerk, Georgine, and our new council secretary, Dana, are all top notch and I am thankful for each and every one of them. Um, now on to the November election. We are looking for election workers, both at the precincts and at the absentee counting board. As we did in the primaries, our workers are provided with personal protection and equipment from face shields to, to protective glass, hand sanitizers and gloves, et cetera. An informational, um, flyer is, and application is located on the clerk's, um, election tab of the city's website, or you can call us at 791-3430. Thank you all very much. I didn't think I'd be pulling an all nighter at my age, though. Thank you all very much. I didn't think I'd be pulling an all nighter at my age, though.
And I'm sure when you were younger to pull an all nighter.
Yeah.
Next, we have councilman, so go ahead, please.
Oh, boy. Uh, once again, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm ashamed of everyone that voted for that. That, I mean, this is ridiculous, letting this happen. We, we talked about this so many times. We don't want this. It's right on the corner. I talked to the previous owner. He was not a used car lot. It was auto repair business. He had one or two cars for sale, he said. It was not a used car lot. If everyone had done their homework, they would have realized this. Um, now, this is, uh, right, you know, it's a major part of the Van Born corridor, Beach Daily and Van Born. It's a major part. Now what we have there? Used car lot. We approved the used car lot and all detailing shop just east of there. I've had nothing but complaints. The ordinance department can check and can verify this. The grass is growing. The guy's violating ordinances, putting flags out, constant complaints about it. Because two residents that live down the street said they, they, they would like it. And then look what we're going through. Now we're dealing with this again. I'm just ashamed of everyone. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but this, this is what, this is 100% what we don't want. Let's, let's make a new, uh, make a motion to put all used car lots from now on, the city of Dearborn Heights on Ford Road. How about that? We'll do that. Anybody want to second that motion? I didn't think so. Okay. Man, I'll tell you, I'm just, I'm just frustrated right now. Um, the back, I want to, I want to congratulate our city clerk and her, her, her staff. Great job. I heard nothing but good things. I went to the polls myself. I didn't, I didn't do absentee. It was really cool how they did everything. They had the sanitizer, the, everything was done really well. Good, good job, Lynn, and your staff. Great job. Um, one more thing is, um, we've been working with the DPW, the Building Maintenance Department, Parks and Recreation. We're having an event this Saturday, August 15th, 9:00 AM at the Richard A. Young Center. Our rain garden maintenance program, annual maintenance program. We look for volunteers for that. It starts at 9:00 AM. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing for city involved, for community involvement. Google rain garden, you'll find out. It's a very fascinating thing. We're also doing something different this year. There's, um, Watershed Stewart Commission, that, that's the ones who's putting on the rain garden maintenance, the Watershed Stewards, which, uh, myself and Bob Cottis are members of. We're starting a new thing that we're adopting and beautifying the local neighborhood park. And this year, we, we adopted Heather Lane Park. And, um, we're doing that also this Saturday at 9:00 AM. We're looking for volunteers for that. We'll be, we'll be weeding, spreading mulch and removing graffiti from this park. This park is a, is a diamond in the rough. It's a beautiful park. I want all the council members, if they can't make it there Saturday, try to make it there sometime. At the next couple of days or next week, to look at this park and to see the potential that this place has. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilman Adella?
Chair, just two quick comments. First of all, um, I'm in a lot of different groups, chat groups, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want to compliment our clerk's office because I heard a lot of comments on a lot of different cities and unfortunately, not too good of comments. Uh, but our city, uh, almost across the board, in different, uh, groups that I'm a part of, uh, not only heard no complaints, but heard nothing but compliments. So good job to all the ladies that worked and put, you know, their potential lives on the line for all of us to be able to have the right to vote. So God bless you and God bless America. Good job. Also, I want to give a major compliment to our library director. Um, I was very impressed and I didn't comment on it during the, um, agenda just because it's, you know, it's a separate issue, we're just voting. But I did notice on item 615, because of our diversified population, I like the fact that, uh, our director took it upon himself to order some books that are in, um, uh, multi languages, to be able to have some diverse books available for those that, um, maybe are not that strong, where they are ESL. So I just wanted to compliment him. As usual, he's doing a great job and very impressed with the job that he does. So thank you very much and, uh, take care.
Thank you. Next, we have councilman Muscat.
First of all, again, uh, kudos to, uh, our clerk office. And, uh, uh, it's, uh, very interesting work in those elections, especially as a, as a chairperson. Uh, I'm hoping to do it again in December, but we'll see what happens then. But I have a question, uh, and I don't know who can answer it, uh, maybe the comptroller or the mayor. But I'm looking at, uh, the city of Dearborn Heights' general cash flow projections, June 2020 to June 2021. And the cash balance on the last day of, uh, June 22, 2020 What contributes to that money? Is that any restricted funds in that? Uh, uh, from my understanding, we still have our $2 million that we approved for healthcare. And, uh, uh, peg fees are still in it. If that's the case, then that number is very inflated by $3 million. So what do we really have as cash for the city?
Okay, we don't, I don't see comptroller Vance in here.
Can anybody ask, answer that question?
You might want to make a call to her office unless.
The deputy is here.
The deputy is here.
There we go.
Actually, I was going to let you know that she is out of the office. She'll be out this entire week. Um, so I'm filling in for her. However, I will direct all questions to her when she comes in so that we can get an answer and get it sent over to you right away.
Uh, and one other thing, what, what does council need to do to protect these funds, to put them in a separate account? Does anybody know that answer?
Oh.
I think.
Are we got, um, treasurer here? Go ahead. Hold on a minute. You got, unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. The charter is very clear. You have the authority to direct me and direct our office at the treasury to put the money wherever you see fit. Uh, the only thing is when we create a new account, new funds, there must be three signatures on it, the mayor, the comptroller, and myself. So if you pass a resolution by the city council, asking the treasury department to put this money anywhere, I am more than willing to do it for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have councilman Carson. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, August 15th, starting at nine o'clock, the, uh, water from the top of the Richard Young Center and other places, it drains into the three rain gardens, uh, that were installed behind the Richard Young Center. We, Watershed Stewards and the honor students from Crestwood and some of the other high schools help weed these gardens and put down mulch. So where any helpers would be invited and as councilman Wenzel mentioned, uh, also apparently we're going to have volunteers helping to clean up Heather Lane Park, which is right at the end of my block. Um, so, uh, everyone, if they can get out and participate, that would be great. We've had great help from the community in the past. And then again, um, I think prior to the meeting, we got to get discussions about what we're going to do on some of these major items and some of the, what alternatives we have, if any. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other from the council table? This time I will open it up to community announcements, which would be like the library or any kind of meetings that are going on in the city. Anybody there? Uh, Chief Myers, let me unmute you. You need to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, uh, council chair. Um, first, I'm supposed to smile more. I was told that by one of the people watching the video. Uh, I just tried to keep a straight face. I'm going to smile for you because today we had two brand new officers get sworn in. I'm very proud to say that we had Officer Sirko Koy get sworn in. He is a nine-year member of the United States Marine Corps. He is going to come serve our city as honorably and dignified as he has our country. I'm very excited that he's here. He's a college graduate. Um, and then we have Tyler Butkin, another, uh, young man who decided that after he finished his bachelor degree, that serving the city of Dearborn Heights, um, even at these times where it's, 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 it's a very trying time, it's a very exciting time for law enforcement. Both Tyler and Sirko, um, has made a commitment to the citizens of Dearborn Heights and I'm very excited for both of them. And I was also very excited because our clerk, uh, Lynn Sienna, got her first swearing in today. And she did an excellent job and I want to thank her for doing that. Um, it's a, it's a nerve wracking thing and she's going to do a great job because we still have more spots to fill. So, um, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council for budgeting these people, the mayor for approving them. Uh, we're getting close. Uh, we still have retirements, but we're going to, we're going to have a fully staffed police department with, uh, young men and women to, uh, serve the citizens of our, our community. I'm very excited about that. Um, second thing, just real briefly, we have Operation Safe Streets coming up, uh, August 17th through 28th. That is a joint venture between, uh, Dearborn Police Department, uh, Melvendale, Garden City, Inkster, Westland, the University of Michigan, City of Southfield, City of Belleville, Allen Park, and I'm probably missing somebody. But it is a operation where we focus on, uh, directed enforcement of traffic violations to curb both, um, traffic offenses, but also violent crime and transient property crime. So we will be out there, those agencies will be out there, um, enforcing, uh, violations. Included in that is, uh, exhibition driving, which is drag racing, squealing your tires. It's, uh, modified exhausts on vehicles. So from the 17th through the 28th, you're going to see an increase in that. Uh, we will have a video out on Facebook by our traffic division to let everybody know what that's about. But, uh, that is coming up. We're putting everybody on notice. We want people to drive safely. Follow the, uh, the laws of the state of Michigan and the city of Dearborn Heights. And you will see the police out there making those enforcement actions to curb, uh, um, additional crime. So that is going on. And other than that, thank you very much. And I'll smile more, I promise, when I'm up talking.
Okay, next we have, um, Director McCaffrey from the library. We need to.
Hello, council chair and mayor. Uh, just wanted to give a brief update on a couple of things. Uh, first off, our, our vehicle did arrive. Um, it is marked appropriately. Um, and, uh, we're working on procedures to, uh, in the next couple of weeks, uh, have a, uh, delivery service for our residents, for those of those, for those residents who are hesitant to come to the library or leave their homes for whatever reason. So, uh, details will be coming, uh, on that shortly. So I just wanted to, uh, make an announcement on that. Um, and, uh, we concluded our summer reading program. We delivered, uh, packages to hundreds of resident homes. Um, and, uh, had over a thousand participants, both adults and kids. Um, and so, um, just wanted to talk about that. And, uh, so thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
Thank you. Any other public announcements from anybody in the community? Help me to receive anybody. No one. This time I will open it up to public comment. You have three minutes. You need to state your name. And I have, um, Vince. Let me unmute you. So you don't want to know? Okay, sorry. We have Gary Miyaki. Let me, I unmute you.
What are you talking to? I, I was just applauding the police for being hired in. That's, that was a little.
Okay.
I'm glad they're here.
Sorry, Gary, we can't hear you.
And you know, we've been having trouble on some of the people with that for some reason. Councilman Muscat had to dial in. Not here.
Can he maybe send a message or?
Well, okay, at this point, let him deal with the tech because we have him unmuted. Let's see if there's anybody else. We'll come back to Gary in a minute. Is there anybody else that has any other comments?
Treasure.
Seen anybody.
Treasurer Aldehak hand his hand up.
Okay, let me unmute him. I'll unmute him. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Aldehak, you're going to have to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
I did. Thank you. I want to, I have a couple or three comments. I would like to see the city council give, you know, the mayor some kind of resolution two or three months to find a new legal or to keep the same one if he is the one to be chosen to continue. Because my experience that he comes the last minute always with something and put it in front of the city council where you don't have the time really to decide and it is urgent. But I believe you should pass a resolution to give the mayor 60 days in order to find a new, uh, council for the city. Or if you decide to keep Mr. Miyaki, that would be fine. The second thing, uh, I have several questions from city council members. And this, in response to, uh, to Lisa. They asked me about $653,948 was left on June 30th and 2019. It is called in the audit report levy 345. I believe this money, if it was levy for 345, it should have went either to the pension board of the police and fire because it's belonged to them and there shouldn't be anything left. Or if it was for the health portion which was levied, that shouldn't be there too. Uh, this money, I did, I asked several people in the city, the previous clerk, John. I asked the comptroller and I couldn't get straight answer where this money is left. So I wish that the mayor or whoever prepared the budget can tell us what happened to this money. Who is it belong to? And if it is levied under Act 345, it should go to the pension board, to the police and fire, or it should not be levied to the resident. The $2 million which was approved by the city council a couple of years ago for, uh, the Fund 115 to basically reduce the OPB liability, which the mayor claimed it's 111 millions. But looking at, uh, Plant Moran last audit, it's actually 177 million dollars. And I encourage the city council to look at that. It's not 111. And I believe this $2 million, I spoke to the chief of police and he assured me today that this $2 million, it's in the hands of, uh, the, of the board and it is invested. Uh, I would like to make sure that this money, it's really invested and it's not in the general fund.
Okay.
I hope you, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, go ahead. Uh, we have Chief Myers. Let me unmute him. Go ahead. Go, you got, unmute yourself, chief. Go ahead.
I just want to make a clarification. Uh, when I spoke to the treasurer today, he was speaking to me as the trustee for the Act 345 pension system, not as the chief of police, first of all. And secondly, my statement was that the money that's been provided by the. We've been listed in 2015. I, the amount that he's talking about, I would have to go through, we'd go through our minutes and discuss what that amount was. So as the two, the 345 trustee, I, I would request that he comes with those same questions as a board member. But, um, under this guise, I was not speaking as the chief of police, as trustee. Any money that's been provided to the act, under the 115 trust, we have invested. The amount that he's talking about, I would have to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a follow-up question to that? Because I've been questioning that amount as the treasurer had indicated. And again, not getting an answer to it. Because I've been questioning that amount as the treasurer had indicated, and again, not getting an answer to it. And, uh, for the police chief, as a trustee, can you please tell us when the next, uh, meeting will be, and if that could be available by Zoom? And that's for the Act Three Forty-five, please.
So we do not do by Zoom. We will be having it in person at this time. Actually, we do do it by Zoom. We have had a couple Zooms. It is posted, um, both on the website and at City Hall. The next meeting is, it's the third Wednesday of the month at four fifteen. So I believe we're going to be looking at it a week from tomorrow. Whatever date that is. So if that helps you. So I, I encourage you, come with those questions. That's why we're there. But it would be, it would be, um, irresponsible of me to make that claim of the exact amount we've invested already because I, I don't have those numbers with me for this meeting.
And that will be in person or by Zoom?
No, there is a Zoom. There'll be a Zoom link. I apologize. We, we've met, but the last couple, we've been doing by Zoom as well.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public, well, public comments?
Madam Chair. That information, I do have the Zoom information. It should be posted on our website by the end of the week, okay? It'll be posted at City Hall in the board, and we'll post it on the website at the beginning of the week. It's or by the end of the week. It's August nineteenth at four fifteen via Zoom.
Okay.
The Trustee Myers said.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm not seeing anybody else. Do we hear a move to?
Wait, wait, wait. Um, Gary was, if we could maybe, I don't know what we can do for him. Um, I know he muted now. Maybe we can try again with him. Sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. So I might need a few more minutes than three, just because.
You need to request that ahead of time. We can't do that.
Well, Council Chair, it's for the city's good, not simply for my.
It has to be in writing ahead of time, and I've done it with everybody else, and I, I would love to do it, but I'm not going to break the rule because I don't want it to be a habit in future meetings.
All right, I'll try to be quick, but recognize that it's, this is, this is more a matter of clarifying some things. And if they're not clarified, then I'll assume certain things like, for example.
Are you, can, are you here as a resident?
I'm here both as a resident and as whatever I am. Let's be clear on a few things here. Under the charter, there is no necessity of a written agreement to end up having the contract. This has never been done practically at all with regard to anyone doing legal work for the city, and it is not necessary, and it's not a, a charter requirement. And I want to make sure I remind everyone that when the motion to confirm my appointment was not seconded, I specifically asked the council chair if I was holding over. And because in part, I had spoken to the mayor about this, and I asked him, are you considering me to hold over or not? And he said yes. So I asked the council chair, and the council chair said yes. Clearly said yes, and said that I would be continuing to do work during the COVID emergency. So, uh, in terms of this, I want to be very clear that if the position is that all of the attorneys, I'm, I'm holding over, then I'll hold over. If the position is I'm not holding over, then I'm not sure if I should be talking to the mayor with regard to this, or just basically bringing a declaratory judgment action to ask a court whether or not I'm holding over, not holding over, or what my authority is. I would also note that all firms that do legal work for the city, except those through MMRMA, do it based on appointments by me, making them assistant corp councils with the approval of the mayor per the charter. So if I'm not authorized, then none of them are authorized as well. Now, you had a motion that basically ended up saying that I'm authorized, and this is, I'm, I'm relying on that motion for forty-five days, which I'll take through September twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. Now, if I'm not authorized after that point, I need to make sure that everyone who is doing work would also have that understanding, and I'm not sure that they're authorized now either based on the position that you've taken. In other words, I should be doing all the legal work for the city through September twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. And I should turn to Seacrest Wardle. I should turn to Gisorick Morgan. I should come, turn to, uh, coming to court.
Three minutes. At this point, you've got fifteen seconds.
Well, um, are they supposed to continue or are they not supposed to continue, based on your motion?
We will discuss that at the next meeting then. At this time, see, looking at the charter, I'm, I'm going to answer this because it, it, it was hard for me to get to this point. The charter says that you can appoint an employee to be assistant council, which is an employee agreement. Hiring another firm is wrong because that requires a contract also, which would also have to be presented to city councils. So what I can suggest you possibly do is get a contract for Seacrest Wardle, just like yours, and just give it to us at the next meeting. And piggyback them on you as a contract. The contract is the main thing. And that's following our charter. Um, it's been misinterpreted in the past. And at this point, I would have no problem with Seacrest being another firm with another contract. I, I don't think anybody else would either, looking at the other council members. Go ahead, Councilwoman Bella.
I'm sure, I mean, to me, it's, it's only logical that all these firms will be all one, period.
That's not how our charter allows them. We need to sit down and look. I asked Council, um, Corporate Council Miyake to help us on February eighteenth, start a charter review committee so we wouldn't have these questions, and he has yet to get back to me with anything. There's been zip, nothing. I've not heard anything since February. Um, so.
But at least for this particular purpose, at this point, to me, the logical thing would be all in one, period. I mean, it, it, it's the logical thing to me. Otherwise, we're going to have to vote on each and every firm separately, if that's the case.
I don't have a problem with that. I would still approve it. I don't know if you would, but I would. I mean, it's just keeping it.
Separately, you mean, or as one?
No, separately, because that's what the charter says. He can appoint employees, but hiring another firm requires a contract, which would have to be presented to city council and also approved by city council, just like we did our attorney. It's another attorney. We had to approve that. So at this time, do we have anybody else that has any, do we see any other hands out there? Okay, we've got, there's no one list, and I'm, I need her. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes. Get your name, address. Go ahead, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my name's Leslie Winless. I live in Dearborn Heights. And I spoke to you guys, um, the last meeting about, um, racism and addressing it in the city of Dearborn Heights. So I'm just expecting, um, the council to do what is in interest of the people who are voting for you guys and who are residents and taxpayers of your district. There is, um, civil unrest related to racism in America. And I think we all must do and act urgently, urgently to dismantle systematic racism in any form of it. Um, you all have the power to address this in our city, even if it doesn't direct you, um, directly affect you. I just want you to have empathy for your neighbors in which it does impact. Today, I'm only asking for two tangible, uh, things to move forward, um, immediately. One being, um, that you adopt, like many of the other cities around you, a resolution that supports the notion that racism is a public health crisis, and that addresses issues that we face, and that, that resolution be overseen by a diversity and inclusion committee. Um, I know that the mayor has stated, um, probably over a month or so, that he was working to get that committee reinstated. But once again, it's been over a month, and there's been no progress. So those are the two things that we're asking for, um, and I just would like to see it on the next agenda if possible.
Thank you. Yeah, that's something you might want to call the mayor's office on. I don't see the mayor on the screen right now.
Well, the one of them was for you. The diversity, uh, committee is for him, that he has to reinstate. But the other one is the resolution from the council, um, as racism. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, I'm trying to unmute the mayor. Hold on.
Hello?
Go ahead. I think we can hear you.
Okay, uh, I'm, I think I will be able to recommend, uh, members for the commission at the next meeting. I, uh, there was someone that I interviewed today. These interviews seem to take a long time, and they've been very popular. I've gotten a lot of good ideas, and the individual, who I think is extremely dynamic, agreed to be on the commission. So I'm taking a lot of time and effort to get good people on the commission, and I will be calling you probably later this week, early next week.
Okay, awesome. That's good to hear. I just want to make sure we're making progress.
Oh, we are. We are. Dynamic people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I understand we have two other people. Okay, we've got Vanessa Wells. Let me unmute her. You have two minutes. Hold on a minute. Can somebody unmute? Not meeting for me. So go ahead, Vanessa.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Hello?
Go ahead. You got two minutes. You got three minutes. State your name, address, and go forward.
Okay, uh, my name is Vanessa Wells, two six two eight four McDonald Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I am concerned about, uh, the, the COVID nineteen property tax relief. Called the city hall this morning, and they said they haven't had any, you know, no results, you know, for people to, the residents of Dearborn Heights to pay their taxes, you know, have them extended. Because, you know, some people lost their jobs or illness. You know what I'm saying? So I was, I was, I was trying to understand, do you have any tax relief in, you know, maybe near, maybe near in the months or something to help, you know, to help, uh, the residents, including myself, help pay their property taxes for this year?
Mayor, would you like to respond to that?
I don't, I don't have a res, if, if you can hear me, I do not have, uh, I, I would suggest she call the office, and I will check with the assessor's office. And I don't know if anybody of my staff is on the phone. We've talked about certain programs with COVID nineteen. I am not aware of one dealing with the payment of property taxes, but we certainly would look into it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, okay. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions that we have out there? Uh, Latonya Gator, let's unmute her, and Latonya, if you can put your hand down. Okay, go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone. Uh, again, my name is Latonya Gator. I'm a Dearborn Heights resident. Um, I'm, I'm, um, would like some information on a police matter that happened, uh, very near to my house on yesterday. It involved a, uh, the two-wheeler-type motorbike. Um, um, a, a kid was, uh, pulled over, and, uh, there seemed to be about three or four police, uh, cars that came to the scene of that. It didn't appear to be a, a violent matter, or, you know, there wasn't an accident or anything. So I was wondering, is there a, if I could ask this question, is there a policy or a reason or the, you know, the logic behind four police cars coming to, um, address a situation such as that?
Hey, Chief, would you like to respond to that?
I wouldn't be able to respond right now because I have no idea what incident she's talking about. So I, I can't, I can't intelligently answer that question for her. I'd love to. She's welcome. If there's a concern, she's welcome to come on, and, uh, you know, she can always contact the police department. I've talked to Ms. Gator multiple times. I just, I, I have no idea what incident she's talking about.
My muscat is raising his hand. Do you know?
Uh, well, no, just related to this. Chief, are minibikes illegal? And are the electric bicycles that kids are riding, are those legal to be driven in the streets?
You asked a bunch of questions there. Depends on the CCs. It depends on the age of the individual. It depends on.
I'm talking about minibikes.
It, it depends on if it's licensed, unlicensed, if it's, if it's authorized for street use, what the equipment that's on it. So there's not a blanket statement for that.
I remember minibikes not being legal. That's why.
Well, your term minibikes, people have a lot of definitions. If there's turn signals, brakes, if it's over a certain CC, if it meets certain US standards, it, it depends. If it's completely illegal, then it's illegal. But there's really so many variables to what you're asking. You're not, I can't make a blanket statement on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have Director Hatch. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to, um, talk a little bit to Vanessa, who spoke, uh, I think to people before the chief. Vanessa, our department, which is the CDBG, uh, department, and I'll give you the phone number. We do have a program that would help you pay your rent. We don't pay the taxes, but we do help if you qualify. This is under the CARES Act. We would help pay your rent for three months, or your mortgage for three months, along with your utilities. Uh, I will give you the phone number, which is three one three seven nine one three five zero zero. Please call our office, and we'll talk to you in person about that. Uh, maybe we can help. Thank you, Madam Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Guys, I'm, I'm muting to run. Did you get the number, Vanessa?
I said seven nine one. What was it, man?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
Three five zero zero, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just call her, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Here, thank you. All right, any other comments or from the audience? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, at this time, let's unmute our council members and make a motion to adjourn.
I moved to.
Say aye. Hold the post. The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.